I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Corville City Council to order, May 22, 2018. Roll call.
Councilmember Foster.
Present.
Gross.
Here.
Gil.
Dodd.
Here.
Goodrich.
Here.
All councilmembers except for Tom Gill are present. He was here but had to go home and help his wife who had a flat tire, but he will be returning shortly. And the city clerk, the mayor, and assistant city administrator and legal staff are here. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I would move to approve the agenda except for item 19, C and D.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion by Dodd, seconded by Goodrich, to approve it with two removals. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Wow, he's passed. Okay, the agenda is approved as amended. Item four, citizen comments. This is the time for anyone in the audience that'd like to speak to us about an item that's not already on the agenda. Seeing none and hearing none, and we'll move forward and welcome Tom back. You didn't miss much. One item five. Five is disposal of property, public hearing. This is a public hearing on a vacation of a portion of East Second Avenue between East Ninth Street and East Seventh Street. I'll open the public hearing. Are there any comments? Any written?
No written.
Okay. Seeing and hearing none, I'll close the public hearing and the resolution, Don.
Resolution, vacating a portion of East Second Avenue between East Seventh Street and East Ninth Street, introduced for adoption by councilmember Foster, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Gil. Discussion. Roll call.
Gross.
Aye.
Gil.
Aye.
Dodd.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Resolution passes all ayes. Item six is a lease agreement, and item under that is a public hearing. This is for a five-year lease with an option for additional five years with the Arby's Restaurant on First Avenue. I'll open the hearing. Any comments on this? Written?
No written.
Okay. Close the public hearing and consider the resolution.
Resolution approving lease agreement with Restaurant Concepts, Inc., for 801 First Avenue, introduced for adoption by councilmember Gross, seconded by...
Sec.
Seconded by Dodd. Discussion. Roll call.
Gil.
Aye.
Dodd.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Item seven is a property exchange. This is a swap of ownership of the city's property with the adjoining Collins family property for the First Avenue right-of-way near Brown Deer Golf Club. Open the public hearing. Any comments? Written?
No written.
Okay. Close the public hearing and the resolution, Don.
Resolution approving disposal of auditors, parcel 2001-7034, to James and Susan Collins, introduced for adoption by councilmember Gil, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Discussion. Roll call.
Dodd.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Gil.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Okay. Item eight is an ordinance, a first consideration of amending the zoning ordinance for property at 1710 Commercial Park, and our building official, Jim Kessler, is going to give us a report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a request by IDNA, as we all know, is located on Heartland Drive, Commerce Drive, and Commercial Park. And what they want to do is rezone, right now their property, at this point, which abuts Commercial Park, fronts on that, is I-2. And a few years back, actually, we rezoned this lot to C-2 because they were looking to maybe sell it off. They didn't think they needed it. They wanted to sell it off. They thought zone commercially would have a better resale value for it. But now they have actually several plans they're working on for expansions in additions to their plan. And what they want to do is go ahead and, excuse me, rezone the whole, both lots, this one from C-2 and this one from I-2, to an IPUD because they're thinking that they might actually have a second building, maybe on this lot, maybe in some other location when all their plans work out. But what they're doing here is just, they want to get the zoning in place so when they're ready to go with any of their expansions, it's a shorter process for them. It'll just be through the PUDB site plan process at that point. So anyhow, this was on PMZ the other night and recommended for approval by a six to zero vote.
Thank you, Jim. Item C is a public hearing on this amendment. Any comments? Any written?
No written.
Okay. Seeing and hearing none, I'll close the public hearing and consider the first reading of the ordinance.
Ordinance number 2018-1010, and ordinance amending the Corville zoning ordinance, the same being ordinance number 664, as previously amended, rezoning certain property located within the corporate limits of the city of Corville, Johnson County, Iowa, and generally known as 1710 Commercial Park, a DNA subdivision, part three, from I-2 Light Industrial District and C-2 Artorial Commercial District, to IPUD-1 Industrial Plan Unit Development, One District, introduced for adoption, first consideration by councilmember Dodd, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Gross. Discussion. Roll call.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Gil.
Aye.
Dodd.
Aye.
Ordinance passes its first consideration, all ayes. Item nine, Bridgewater Subdivision, part two and four. We'll let Jim tell us about the amended PUD.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is actually an amendment to the IPUD, or I'm sorry, residential PUD plan for Bridgewater Subdivision. They're amending the site plan for lots number two, which is this area up in here, and lot number four, part four, which is down here. And actually, it's the only thing that we're really doing in part two is there is an outlot created up here, and there is another outlot created down here. And these are small outlots. And the reason for these outlots, as well as this one that's down here in part four, is that the quarry has mining rights under this area, and should they ever do that and have to tunnel underneath there, then they have to be able to vent those tunnels out to air. So this is something that's been in place for quite some time, but we need to get the outlots included on this platting so that they're there if and when they ever actually need them. The second amendment to this is over on lot 63, which is clear over in this western section. This is Redtail Village, Woodridge Estates, right here. Previously, we showed four building footprints here. There were going to be four towers of, four floors with four apartments per tower, so it was going to be a total in that four building footprint of 160 units. Now they're changing this to a three-building footprint, but by doing this, they're actually gaining 20 dwelling units. So they're upping the dwelling units by 20 in the dwelling units per acre. Although, even though we're adding 20 more units to this subdivision, we are still below the low-density threshold for development. So we're still within that threshold for development. This also was on PMZ the other night and recommended for approval by a six to zero vote.
Okay. Thank you, Jim. Next item is a public hearing on this amended PUD site plan. Are there any comments? No written. You beat me to it. How'd you know I was going to ask?
Well, I just have something that Mike wanted to show you, so I'll put this up on the screen, too.
Okay. We can do it during the public hearing before we close it. Go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, I just...
Introduce yourself, please.
Yep, Mike Bales with Venture One and Urban Ankers Real Estate. And we've been working on a revised site plan for this, and by no means is this a finished product, but we went ahead and had OPN Architects that's working with us, just give a little preview, so I thought you might just want to take a look at it. Is that Mike?
Oh, here?
Yep.
There you go. So this is kind of the interest. Do you want to just walk them through this, Mike?
Yeah, it's basically, I mean, this is just the concept at this point, but we took the buildings down, so they're four stories, or sorry, five stories above two levels of underground parking, and three buildings instead of four. So we brought the mass down and contoured it more to the site, basically. You know, fit it better, if you can go back to the site plan, Jim.
Actually, Mike, I think I have some pictures of that, if you want to see those. Oops.
Yeah, that's an earlier concept, but basically it shows how the buildings come down and contour around the pond. Just helps with the overall sight, and we think it'll be better positioned for the city as well.
Okay, well, I'll close the public hearing, and we'll consider the resolution.
Resolution approving the amended PUD-A site plan for Bridgewater Subdivision, part two and four, Corville, Iowa, introduced for adoption by councilmember Goodrich, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Foster. Any discussion? Roll call.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Gil.
Aye.
Dodd.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Thank you. Item 10 is Coral Crossing, sixth edition. And we'll let Jim give this report as well.
Okay, this is another addition to the development of Coral Crossings out off of Oakdale Boulevard and where Spring Rose Court comes off of, I'm sorry, Jones Boulevard and Oakdale Boulevard, and Spring Rose Court comes off of Jones Boulevard. But if you've been out there, as you know, in the past, we have approved several plats for this already. This is another, this is part six, lot six, and it's going to be another 36-unit apartment house. Same thing that we already have out there, same materials, same style, same everything. This is just the PUD site plan for it because they've plotted everything and they've rezoned everything, but they're doing one lot or two lots at a time as they're actually being developed with their site plans. So this has got underground parking. You can see where the entrance to underground parking here is off of the drive-through parking lot, and then we have surface parking as well. So it's the same thing we've already approved. This was on PMZ and recommended for approval by a six to zero vote as well.
Thank you, Jim. I'll open the public hearing on this item. Any comments?
No written.
No written. Okay. Close the public hearing and we'll do the resolution.
Resolution approving the PUD-B site plan for lot six, Coral Crossing, sixth edition, Corville, Iowa, introduced for adoption by councilmember Foster, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Gil. Discussion. Roll call.
Gross.
Aye.
Gil.
Aye.
Dodd.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Item E is the same subdivision, and Jim will give a report on that.
Yes, it's actually the same subdivision. It's just lot number seven. Same thing, another 36 unit, same as before. So that's it. Same materials, same style, same everything.
Okay.
Recommended for approval by a six to zero vote.
Thank you. Open the public hearing. I bet there aren't any written.
Same.
Okay. Close the public hearing. Resolution, Don?
Resolution approving the PUD-B site plan for lot seven, Coral Crossing, sixth edition, Corville, Iowa, introduced for adoption by councilmember Gross, seconded by...
Second.
Ooh, that was close. Seconded by Dodd, we'll say. Discussion. Roll call.
Gil.
Aye.
Dodd.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Item 11 is Coral Crossing, seventh and eighth edition. And this is the final plat for this project.
Final plat for the seventh edition is the first one we'll look at, and this is for lots 11, 12, and 13. Actually, this is Spring Rose Court coming down off of Jones Boulevard and circling around Blue Sage Drive, which is a private drive that goes through the subdivision. This half of it's pretty much developed with fourplexes and duplexes now. So now we're on the other side, on the western leg of Blue Sage, and it's going to be developed with these three lots, and these three lots are being developed as fourplexes. Lot 11 has two fourplexes, one here and one here. Lot number 12 has three fourplexes on it, and lot number 13 has two fourplexes and one threeplex on it. Same thing that they're already developing into the neighborhood. So once again, it's the same material, same buildings are building already, so it's approved. Recommended for approval by the PMZ by a six to zero vote.
Thank you. Resolution, Don?
Resolution approving the final plat for Coral Crossing, Seventh Avenue, Corville, Iowa, introduced for adoption by councilmember Gil, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Discussion. Roll call.
Dodd.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Gil.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Item B is the same subdivision, final plat, but this is for the eighth edition.
Just an...
Excuse me. Go ahead.
Pardon me?
Are you waiting for me?
No. Do you want to say, Jim?
Are you on the final plat for...
Yeah, for the eighth edition.
Eighth edition, okay. Then I'll describe that for you. I haven't done that one yet, so. Eighth edition, just as a continuation from the seventh edition, only it's down here, once again, around Spring Rose Circle, and slots number eight, nine, and 10. Those will be developed as 36 units, and then a slot number 14, which encompasses all this area right in here, and that'll be developed as townhomes. I might add, this is the western edge of Coral Crossings. When you cross this boundary line, then you're in Ridgeview Subdivision. So this will be, from what we have plotted now, what we already have, rezoned, this will be all of Coral Crossings at this point.
Okay.
Recommended for approval, six to zero.
Thank you. Okay, Don, sorry.
Resolution approving the final plat for Coral Crossing, eighth edition, Corville, Iowa, introduced by councilmember Dodd, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Foster. Discussion. Roll call.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Gil.
Aye.
Dodd.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Item 12, lots 11 and 13, Coral Crossing, seventh edition. Jim, building report, please.
Oops, where'd we go here? I lost it. Sorry. Well, so let's go back to the final plat of the seventh edition because it's actually the same thing as I described before, lots 11, 12, and 13, which are going to be developed. As I said, 11's going to have two fourplexes on it, 12's going to have three, and 13 is going to have just two fourplexes and a threeplex on it. I'm sorry, I lost the colored picture of it, but it's the same thing as we already have out there. It's just more of the same, as well, eighth edition, when they do the site plan on that, it's just all the fourplexes that they're already having. This was also recommended by a six to zero vote.
Okay. Item C is a public hearing on the PUD site plan for lots 11 through 13 of Coral Crossing, seventh edition. Any comments?
No written.
Okay. Close the public hearing, the resolution.
Resolution approving the PUD-B site plan for lots 11 through 13, Coral Crossing, seventh edition, Corville, Iowa, introduced for adoption by councilmember Goodrich, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Gross. Discussion. Roll call.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Gil.
Aye.
Dodd.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Item 13 is Coral Galleria, part three. Public hearing.
Something new for you here, rather than Coral Crossings.
All right.
We have Coral Galleria, which is a subdivision that actually has been on the books for quite some time. Maybe back in 2011, we first looked at this, I think, if I remember correctly. But anyhow, at that point in time, Coral Galleria, which is located on 25th Avenue, James Street, and Second Avenue, or Second Street or Highway 6 out here, two lots over the original eight-lot subdivision have already been developed. Lot number seven is the Longhorn Steakhouse, which is located here. Lot number eight is the Residence Inn, which is located here. So what they're doing is taking the remainder, actually, five lots, because this has been amended once before and done away with lot six, but amending the five lots that are left into three commercial building lots. It's already rezoned as a commercial plan unit development. Lot number one, lot number two, and lot number three. So I'll kind of skip through this so we can kind of see what I'm talking about as we're going here. So lot number one, which is this large lot right here, will be developed with this multi-tenant building that is 133,527 square feet in size. So it's a good-sized building, but it's kind of for the bigger stores, and as you go from the west to the east, you can see as the units get a little smaller, but they will be all pretty good-sized storefronts. And this whole development is kind of geared toward retail development and maybe restaurant development. And then we have lot number two in the amended plat, which is a four-unit multi-tenant building. And then we have lot number one over here, which is just a single-building development lot, possibly for a restaurant, because they're kind of showing a drive-through around this area here. So basically, it's either retail or possibly restaurant. This is just more of the platting and the utility work as we check, go through it. This is kind of the, excuse me, landscaping they'll have there. They have a good amount of screening out here along the, actually, along the railroad tracks. The railroad tracks are right here, to kind of screen the parking from Second Street and the northern view of it. The buildings, I didn't mention, but the buildings, actually, the building fronts all face to the north, so this is where all the building fronts are. And the back of the buildings that face James Street are kind of the loading docks, trash receptacle areas in that area there. But anyhow, there's very good screening along here, all the way along here, and even comes around on 25th Avenue and comes back for the screening, and then we have some really decent landscape islands in here. We have some permeable pavers in here to handle the stormwater quality issues that we have. There's still a little bit of a work in process on the stormwater plan and the water quality issues, but it's working its way through as well. Now just keep clicking through here till we get to something of interest for us. This is kind of a big PUD. This is just kind of showing what the back of the building would look like with their loading docks, where their trucks would back in, their dumpster locations, and what have you. Again, that's what's against James Street. Trying to get here to... Okay, so this is kind of the building elevations we're looking at. I realize they're kind of small. I might add that when we first did the original PUD, we set into place building material covenances and building styles. And the building materials, pretty much what we use today, they do have ephesus in them, which we kind of have got away from today, but they do have some ephesus in them, which is still perfectly fine building material for this case. So it's basically stone, brick, glass, metal around the windows, around the doors, and what have you, and some ephesus on it. This would be the north elevation of the building. The south elevation of the building, we have a little different elevations a little bit later. East elevation, and then the west elevation of the building. So this would be the east elevation that would be along 25th Avenue. This is just, it's a north elevation of a west tenant, so they're just showing one tenant space, example of what the one-tenant space might look at. This would be the north elevation, west elevation, and then the south elevation, again, at that James Street elevation. So here's the other building. What I wanted to show you was that on the north elevation of the building, which we're not seeing here, we're seeing the south elevation, but the north elevation had some raised parapet roofs on it. And our original covenances also called for 360-degree architecture. So on the back of the building, when we first saw it this time, as an example, they didn't have all of the parapets on it. They didn't have some of the raises on it that are showing on here. And so we had those added on the south side of the building, so we're closer to our 360-degree architecture that we were asking for. This is actually the front elevation of the building. This is the four-unit building or the four-tenant building. This would be the front elevation or the north elevation that would face Second Street, west, east, south elevation. You can see that this architecture is pretty much 360 all the way around this building. And then we really asked for them to do up, and they're still tweaking this a little bit, but this is an example of what we're asking for along James Street to screen the back of this building, the loading docks, and the trash enclosure details and some of their other, you know, mechanical details they have in the back of the building, of course. So what they're doing is proposing a pretty high berm here. This berm could be up four feet high. It's got some limestone outcroppings in it, and it's got some pretty good-sized landscaping in it, so that as you're driving down James Street, you're not going to notice the back of the building. You'll see the landscaping, and that was our intent, and that was what our wish was. So they've done a pretty good job of presenting that to us as well. So that's pretty much the revision of Coral Galleria, the rebirth of Coral Galleria, I might say. So the preliminary plat and the final plat for lots one and two, the PUDB site plans were all approved, recommended for approval by PMZ by a six to zero vote.
Thank you, Jim. Item C is a public hearing on this. Are there any comments? Any written?
No written.
Okay. Close the public hearing and consider the resolution.
Resolution approving the amended PUD-A site plan for Coral Galleria, Corville, Iowa, introduced for adoption by councilmember Foster, excuse me, seconded by...
Flashback.
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Discussion. I have a question. Is this Coral Galleria in any of the mall TIF amended zones?
Yeah. So it actually is in one of the ones that did not expire.
I wondered about that.
Yeah.
Good.
So I don't, I think the ordinance is already on this, so I'll double-check to make sure. Otherwise, we'll bring it back at the end of the year to capture the building down to it.
Thank you. Roll call.
Gross.
Aye.
Gil.
Aye.
Dodd.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Item E is also a resolution for this project.
Resolution approving the PUD-B site plan for lots one and two, Coral Galleria, part three, Corville, Iowa, introduced for adoption by councilmember Gross, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Gil. Discussion. Roll call.
Gil.
Aye.
Dodd.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Item 14, moving around the community, we're to the Riverview Plaza now. This is a third and final consideration of the ordinance that adjusts basically the footprints of the second Watts building there along First Avenue. Don?
Ordinance number 2018-1008, and ordinance amending the Corville zoning ordinance, the same being ordinance number 664, as previously amended, rezoning certain property located within the corporate limits of the city of Corville, Johnson County, Iowa, and generally known as Riverview Plaza, part two, from C-2 Artorial Commercial District to CPUD-1 Commercial Plan Unit Development District, introduced for adoption, third and final consideration by the councilmember Gil, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Dodd. Discussion. Roll call.
Dodd.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Gil.
Aye.
The ordinance passes its final consideration, all ayes. Item B is a resolution for this.
Resolution approving the amended PUD-A site plan for Riverview Plaza, lots one through three, Corville, Iowa, introduced for adoption by councilmember Dodd, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Gross. Discussion. Roll call.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Gil.
Aye.
Dodd.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Items C through F coming up. Jim, would you like to report on that?
I will. Okay, this is the CPUD-B site plan for Riverview Plaza, part two, lot two. So this is the northern building of the two buildings that are along First Avenue at this point. The first building here is actually pretty far into construction. We've actually even done some final inspections on the top floors of this building, so it's moving right along. But anyhow, this is the building to the north. And this PUDB site plan, we actually are showing where the city has acquired the Levita building. So what that allowed us to do by acquiring the Levita building is stretch out this building. So this building is actually longer and bigger, more square footage. I believe it's by about 1,300 and some odd square feet larger than building number one, but it's still all retail on the first floor, and then it's apartments on the second, third, fourth floor, so there's three levels of apartments. But by gaining more land to the north and getting the Levita, we were able to stretch out this plaza center, excuse me, to the south of this building or between the north and south building. We were able to gain some footage on that, also able to gain some extra footage on the north end here that we could add to Fourth Street coming through here. street one more time, again. So, um, this was looked at by PMZ the other night. I believe I have, well, this is actually the architecture of the building. This is the first building, but the second building exactly like that. But I kind of wanted to show you, this is a concept that they had showed us of the area between the two buildings. This is not exactly, uh, it's, it's a rendition, so it's not exactly, uh, current as to what it's actually going to look like. But looking at it from an overhead view, if you'd be looking at it, we're, there's going to have some hedge, some hedges here. There's going to be some hedging around the center area, hedges here. This is all green space, benches to sit in, uh, previous pavers here to help with some water quality issues. So as you're looking at it from the overhead, again, and this is a drawing, but this is what it will wind up to look like. You, again, you have that green hedge, you have the benches around here, you have hedge around here, here, and here with the benches intermingled in here. So it's kind of a nice, just little plaza area for the people to sit in and rest while they're doing all their business or their shopping, or even for the people that live in this area. So this PUDB site plan also was on PMZ and recommended for approval by six to zero vote. And I could have just said six to zero for everything and saved a lot of breath. Anyhow, they liked everything they looked at.
Okay, thank you, Jim. This also is a public hearing. Any comments? Last chance, this is the last public hearing on the agenda. Are there any written ones?
I'm afraid no written.
Darn. No written comments, or we'll close the public hearing. Resolution?
Resolution approving the PUDB site plan for Lot Two, Riverview Plaza, Part Two, Corleville, Iowa, introduced for adoption by council member Goodrich, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Foster. Discussion? Roll call. Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Gil.
Aye.
Dodds.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Resolution passes, all ayes. Item G is, again, the same project, just relating to the, um, the city paying the developer for that additional right-of-way that Jim described.
Resolution approving amendment number one to that certain private redevelopment agreement with Riverview Plaza Investments LLC, introduced for adoption by council member Foster, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Gil. Discussion? Roll call. Gross.
Aye.
Gil.
Aye.
Dodds.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Item fifteen, Coral Ridge Avenue Improvements, Holiday Road to Oakdale Boulevard. I would entertain a motion, uh, to approve change order number forty and the pay estimate number thirty to Metro Pavers. Moved by Gil, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Discussion? Roll call. Oh, no, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries, all ayes. Now, a resolution accepting the improvements.
Resolution accepting the Coral Ridge Avenue Improvements, Holiday Road to Oakdale Boulevard as completed, introduced for adoption by council member Gross, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Dodds. Discussion? Roll call. Gil.
Aye.
Dodds.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Gil.
Aye.
Dodds.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Gil.
Aye.
Dodds.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Item seventeen are bonds. There are four items for financing of various city projects, and City Finance Director Tony Rotland's gonna say a few words.
Yes, this, uh, this borrowing was split into four series, A, B, and C, and D, because there are tax laws that, that require, uh, a division of those, uh, certain expenditures into different categories. So we had, um, two underwriters and our financial consultant working on this, uh, yesterday and today. And the interest rates the city has received, um, are, uh, the relationship to the benchmarks are what we expected, their relationship to each other, the four series, are what we expected, um, given the guidance of our financial consultants. So I would, um, suggest that the council accept this and approve these proceedings.
Thank you, Tony. Item A, Don?
Resolution authorizing and approving a loan agreement awarding the sale, providing for the issuance of general obligation, Series 2018A, and providing for the levy of taxes to pay the same, introduced for adoption by council member Dodds, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Discussion? Roll call. Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Gil.
Aye.
Dodds.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. And lastly, D.
Resolution providing for the sale and issuance of general obligation, Annual Appropriation Bonds, Series 2018D, and providing for the levy of taxes, subject to non-appropriation, to pay the same, introduced for adoption by council member Dodds, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Discussion? Roll call. Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Gil.
Aye.
Dodds.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. B?
Resolution authorizing and approving a loan agreement awarding the sale, providing for the issuance of taxable general obligation bonds, Series 2018B, and providing for the levy of taxes to pay the same, introduced for adoption by council member Goodrich, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Gil. Discussion? Roll call. Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. And lastly, D.
Resolution providing for the sale and issuance of general obligation, Annual Appropriation Bonds, Series 2018D, and providing for the levy of taxes, subject to non-appropriation, to pay the same, introduced for adoption by council member Gross, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Discussion? Roll call. Gil.
Aye.
Dodds.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Okay, item eighteen, Corleville Reinvestment District, is first consideration of an ordinance, um, that is required for the city to begin collecting incremental sales tax revenue in the Corleville Reinvestment District, starting July first, 2019, and ending in twenty years, or very likely much sooner than that, when the city collects the $12 million that we were granted from the Iowa Economic Development District.
Ordinance number 2018-1009, an ordinance creating the Corleville Reinvestment District in the Ohio River Landing for, introduced for first consideration by council member Gil, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Dodds. Discussion? Roll call. Dodds.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Gil.
Aye.
Dodds.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Gil.
Aye.
Our ordinance passes its first consideration, all ayes. Item nineteen is, has been amended to be just items A and B, and that's Coral Ridge Avenue Wall Four Repair Project.
Resolution approving engineering services agreement with HR Green Inc. for the Coral Ridge Avenue Wall Four Repair Project, introduced for adoption by council member Dodds, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Foster. Discussion? Roll call. Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Gil.
Aye.
Dodds.
Aye.
Resolution passes, all ayes. Item B.
Resolution ratifying the plan specifications, estimate cost, inform contract, ordering the bids, setting a date for the receiving of said bids, and directing posting of the bid letting off of the Coral Ridge Avenue Wall Four Repair Project, introduced for adoption by council member Goodrich, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Gil. Discussion? Roll call. Gil.
Aye.
Dodds.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Moving on to item twenty, is a resolution of consent that acknowledges that recent acquisition of Integrated DNA Technologies by the Danaheer Corporation as required in their October 31st, 2011 Private Redevelopment Agreement.
Resolution consenting to the change of control of Integrated DNA Technologies, Danaheer Corporation, uh, introduced for adoption by council member Foster, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Discussion? Roll call. Gross.
Aye.
Gil.
Aye.
Dodds.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Item twenty-one is the amendment number one to the Standard Consulting Agreement. This is an amendment that formalizes the addition of TerraCon Consultants as a subcontractor to do the Iowa DOT required material testing instead of Snyder and Associates doing it themselves. And this is at no additional cost.
Resolution approving amendment number one to the Standard Consulting Contract with Snyder and Associates, Inc. for Clear Creek Trail Phases Six and Seven, introduced for adoption by council member Gross, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Dodds. Discussion? Roll call. Gil.
Aye.
Dodds.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Item twenty-two is, um, the Iowa Arena Project, and this is an agreement that advances the sum of $625,000 to ArenaCo to pay for the preliminary grading for the arena project until the financing of the project is finalized. I could try and explain it, or...
Basically, uh, what we're doing here is, uh, ArenaCo is, we're basically a city's, for lack of a better term, loaning, ArenaCo the money, and all this money's going to come back when they get their permanent financing in place. It's just make sure we can keep the project moving forward as, as we're going here, and when all the financing's back in place, this money will come back to the city. If the financing is done beforehand, they won't need it. So, so the agreement with the contractors, actually with ArenaCo, it's not with the city, so...
Basically, it separates off the dirt work that can be done now. It's about six weeks worth of dirt site preparation that could be done now while the various agreements and so forth are being finalized for the much larger, um, construction for the steel-involved project. Resolution, Don?
Resolution approving a development agreement between the city of Corleville and ArenaCo, introduced for adoption by council member Gil, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Discussion? Roll call. Dodds.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Gil.
Aye.
Dodds.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Item B is a resolution that provides for the construction administration of this portion of the project that we just approved to be done by Mortenson Construction.
Resolution approving limited authorization to perform, number six, with MA Mortenson Company, introduced for adoption by council member Dodds, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Gross. Discussion?
Yeah, this is basically what they would have done in the contract, so we'll get credit on the final agreement for this work, but they, that's included in their larger contract, so just making sure that they're wa, they, they're watching to make sure that when they're ready to go with everything else, that the, the pad's ready to go.
Thank you. Roll call. Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Gil.
Aye.
Dodds.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Consent calendar is approved. Item twenty-four is a city engineer road reconstruction report, and Assistant City Engineer Scott Larson's going to give that tonight.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I'll keep this fairly concise. Uh, working from east to west across the city on First Avenue, we are still in Phase Two, Stage One, and I'm getting some feedback there. Um, primarily working on the west half of the First Avenue and Sixth Street intersection. All of the storm sewer on Sixth Street is complete. Most of the sanitary and storm sewer work in that same intersection is nearing completion as well. So as we get into early June is when we should start seeing some of the paving, uh, going down in that particular location as well. So things are going as planned. The Coral Ridge Avenue Project, all the pavement was removed last Friday, completed last Friday for, uh, the current stage that we're in. for the current stage that we're in. So, that was a, a nice goal to reach. And actually, tomorrow, they should start putting down some of the granular gravel subbase for the new paving on Oakdale Boulevard within that segment B one, which is essentially the north half of Oakdale Boulevard and some distance east and west of Coral Ridge Avenue. So, you know, we're already to the point of getting the rock put down so that then the paving subcontractor can mobilize to start knocking out some of their parts of the project. Further north on that job, they are actively grading and hitting the storm sewer improvements pretty hard. So, things are going well. More adjustments to the, the detour route, getting some good feedback from the public. So, we're making adjustments where they are appropriate and where they will help. So, we'll keep working on that. Just south of that project, the DOT's Commerce Drive, I eighty westbound off-ramp improvement started last week, and right now, they are continuing to work on the traffic signal pole bases. So, there's existing signals there, but this project is actually widening the road to provide some additional turn lanes. And because of that widening, the, there has, have to be new traffic signals installed, because the existing signals would simply be too close to the back curb. So, that work is ongoing. And then further to the west, the Clear Creek Trail, that hit a milestone last Friday, I believe, maybe the Friday before. They poured the bridge deck of the first of two new pedestrian bridges over Clear Creek. So, the bridge that they've poured the deck on is just southwest of Lowe's, just east of Deer Creek. So, that's pretty exciting. So, the goal on that project is to really complete all the work, structure-wise, culvert-wise, that's south of Interstate eighty. So, then the whole trail section from the existing end of Clear Creek Trail out to Creekside Ballpark could then be paved and open to the public just as soon as possible. So, that would be a great, great connection to get done early if we can. So, we're pushing, and they, they wanna get that done, too. So, that's it. Any questions?
Scott, I was asked whether, when this long section of Coral Ridge Avenue reopens, that's under, that's closed now, will that shorter section from Wheaton Road to Forever Green also be totally closed?
The... You mean from, from Wheaton North?
Yes.
It will not be totally closed, no.
Unlike this.
Because, because what we are doing now is we're actually rebuilding the west half of that short section that you're talking about. So, once we get to the next phase, we'll be flipping traffic onto that new west half while we tackle the east half.
Okay.
So.
Good. Well, now I know the answer. Any other questions for Scott? I think things are going really smooth. At least I, I primarily use just the First Avenue one, it seems like, in my travels, and it's remarkable how, how well it's going.
Yeah, I think we hear more about, we tend to hear more about Twelfth Avenue than the actual projects, you know, because there's so much traffic kinda diverting and so. But even Twelfth Avenue's not been that bad.
Right.
So.
Great. Thank you, Scott.
Scott.
Item twenty-five is city administrator report.
Thank you. I do wanna thank Scott for all of his work on keeping the projects moving and the communications. It's really been great. And for those of you who are on Facebook, you know, if you pay attention, there are some giveaways. If you, if you take a certain post from the city and the city's Facebook account into, then the specific business, if you take that post into their, into their business, you can get something free certain days of the week. So, pay attention to Facebook. It's a good way to get information. It's also a good way to get some free food, and we have some other giveaways coming up. So, we've been having those about once a week, sometimes more. So, keep an eye out for that. Next week is Memorial Day, so trash pickup will be a day late all week, and city offices are closed on Monday. And Thursday, two days from now, here at City Hall at six-thirty, from six-thirty to eight-thirty, we're working with Kansas State and their brownfields program on a planning process for our area that is south of Highway Six and west of First Avenue. So, in the, kind of the Walgreens area, it's about seventeen acres, and they're doing a planning process for us and looking at potential redevelopment. This is an area that was identified as part of the community plan process, and we did kind of a mini-plan as part of that. We've done some additional planning, and now these Kansas State students are taking another look. So, Thursday at six-thirty here at City Hall is an opportunity to provide public feedback about that, and, and everyone is most welcome.
Thank you, Alan. Well done. Mayor's report. I'll be brief. I mainly just wanted to highlight this very successful arena groundbreaking we had this past Wednesday. Ryan Hicksonbaugh is in the audience, our general manager of the arena, and he had a lot to do with the logistics, as did the city staff. I don't wanna short-circuit the city staff that put a lot of time into, but it was just, I thought it was really well-planned, well-done. It went very smoothly, and it was obviously a very exciting, the only thing that can be more exciting is when we cut the ribbon rather than break the ground. So, thank you, Ryan, and thank you to the city staff for getting that done. Other than that, I wish everybody a happy Memorial Day. There will be services in, in the Corralville Cemetery, as there is every year, usually starting at noon?
Eleven fifteen.
Eleven?
Eleven fifteen.
Eleven fifteen, okay. So, it's a nice event to attend if you're, if you're around. Okay. City Attorney's report.
I have nothing to say.
Nothing, or me neither. Okay. Committee and council members report. Who wants to start? Megan?
Sure. I just wanna remind everybody that this Thursday is the summer reading program kickoff from five to six-thirty P.M. at the library. This year's theme is Libraries Rock, which is really fun. One of the things that I'm very excited about is the library staff and volunteers, is that they're actually going to be painting some rocks and hiding them around town. So, it's kind of like a little treasure hunt. So, that's a really fantastic activity for your kids in the summer. We always enjoy the, the program kickoff. Although, I love our friends at Hills Bank, but those bears, they always freak out my five-year, he just is not a fan of anything in a, in a costume. So, but it, this is a, it's a great event and a great way to kick off the summer activities. And I just also wanted to say, I agree with you, John, we had a great event last week for the groundbreaking of the arena. It was my first groundbreaking as a council member, so that was very exciting. I feel like I haven't been, because I'm new, you know, I haven't done as much of the work as all of you have on the arena. So, I just wanted to commend everybody. I know that this has been a long process, a long time coming, and you guys have all been fabulous and done a tremendous job, and I look forward to working with everybody as this project continues. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mitch?
My colleague took a lot of my library committee reports, so I'll put you on the library committee, yeah. But actually, I did remind, and Don, you kinda said something. It's state tennis tournament week, this week, and I always reflect on my notes from the year past. And as I was going through my notes from this week, I had written for next Wednesday, tomorrow was the day that Mayor Fawcett died. So, it was just interesting that when you mentioned that you said Fawcett instead of Foster, so I thought, all right, there he is, making his presence known, at least on the anniversary. So, just take a moment to remember Mayor Fawcett. I think tomorrow or Thursday will be the, the anniversary of his death, so.
Old habits are hard to break.
Absolutely, absolutely. That's all I have there.
Hey, thank you. Tom?
It was a great event for the, the arena opening. The Memorial Day event, I've been asked to speak at the Memorial Day event at eleven fifteen in Corralville. And prior to that, we take the show on the road to Tiffin, to the Tiffin Cemetery, and that's at ten o'clock. So, if you are around, you can visit Tiffin at ten o'clock, or you can catch us at eleven fifteen at Oak Hill Cemetery.
Very good.
At eleven fifteen. Thank you. Gil?
Thanks, Mayor. The Parks and Rec Commission met last night. We actually had a walking meeting at the Corralville Youth Sports Park, and so that was very interesting. We walked